Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lake Bluff Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting on Tuesday, February 21st at 7:00 PM. And at 7:00 PM, I call this meeting to order. Next, I'll take roll call. I apologize, that wasn't added to the agenda. I'll just go up and down my Zoom list here. Trustee Meyerhoff. Trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Hayes.
Yeah.
Trustee Graziano.
Here.
Trustee Heitzelmann.
Here.
All right, thank you, everybody. We do have a quorum tonight. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? And I will start off by adding a couple of my own. I do apologize, these weren't included in the original list. But first, I wanted to just say that under the Committee Reports, Finance Committee is listed twice, so letter D can be removed from that list. And then, under Building and Grounds Committee, this will be both a committee update and we will have an update about the hot water heater. I have three estimates to compare, and they've already been shared with the Building and Grounds Committee ahead of this meeting, so I'll share that information. And then, we will have one action item during the committee shareout of Building and Grounds, and that is the proposal for the new book drop and bins. And so, just wanted to highlight that will be under Building and Grounds Committee proposal for book drops.
And Renee is the is the discussion of the increase to the Director's spending limit also in there?
So I have that one under New Business, and I mean, it's really the next item on the agenda, so it can kind of all come together. I just wanted to name it separately because it does relate to money, but I admit that when I was putting this agenda, I just, I forgot to add the book drop, so that should be on there as well.
No problems.
Thank you. Any other items to add or correct or remove from the agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none. Oh, and here is Trustee Zaudi.
Matt.
Just came on. Hi, Matt, welcome. We just started. I'll just review that I added a couple of items under the Building and Grounds Committee update. We have an action item for the review and approval, possible approval of the book drop, and then I have information about the hot water heater comparison of estimates. So with that, do we have any public here who would like to address the board? Hearing none. I move on to the next part of the agenda. Now, I'm going to start scrolling into your board packet to refer to the minutes, but we will have two separate minutes to approve tonight. We will have the minutes from the January 17th Board Meeting, and then we also have the minutes from the Emergency Board Meeting. Thank you so much. I think Janie were the one who took those for putting those together, or was it Kathy? I already can't remember. Thank you to either of you, any of you, for creating those. So first, I'm going to scroll to our board packet. And I'm going to zoom in here. So now, we are going to our minutes. So these are the minutes from the Tuesday, January 17th Board Meeting. Do I have any additions or changes or edits to make to these minutes? Just a quick scroll for those that, just to refresh memory. It was a long meeting.
Yes, it was.
It was. Well, hearing no changes or edits to those minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 17th meeting?
And so, move. This is Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a second?
A second. This is Matt.
Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Right. Motion carries. The Tuesday, January 17th meeting minutes have been approved. So now, we go to the meeting minutes from Tuesday, February 7th. It already feels like a month ago, but it was only a couple of weeks ago. These are the meeting minutes from the Emergency Board Meeting at that point. Do I have any changes or edits to these minutes? Just a quick scroll. Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Library Board of Trustees Emergency Meeting of Tuesday, February 7th?
I'll motion. This is Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Do you have a second?
Second, John.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The Tuesday, February 7th minutes of the emergency meeting have been approved. Thank you all. Get those on the website. Great. And so now, I'm going to move on to this month's financials. And again, I just want to apologize for the problems I was having with BSNA, the software. I'm all set and ready to go now, so every time I run the report, it'll give me the proper port and the budget line, so we're all set with that. But I do want to start us with our review of the revenue and expenditures that up here for you all to see. Going to save you the scrolling. And what I'm going to do is actually, I'm going to share the updated document that I sent as the attachment just this evening, as opposed to sharing the board packet, because this is the one that includes all of the codes and all of the lines. So thank you for your patience, as I get that ready for you. Okay. All right. So a couple of things as we get started here with the Revenue and Expenditures Report. I have already spoken to Bettina at the Village, and she confirmed that the delayed dispersment of the property taxes that we did not have in the report last month has been dispersed officially. So the amount that you see here in terms of dispersment for property tax is both this month's January as much as well as December. In terms of how much specifically that is, we, I have another document I can share with you. Bettina shared with me this evening. This is a very big spreadsheet of all of the property tax dispersments for the different departments of the county, or not the county, the village, excuse me. So the library, she highlighted it us at the bottom in green, and then at the top here, you can see the different months for property dispersment, property tax dispersment. So just to highlight for you all, the amount, it is a rather low number, but at this point, we're already at, I believe, 98% of the property taxes that were to collect of the year. So we're getting down towards the wire there, so we won't have as much to collect as we would have in previous months of the year. So this number is small, but I will make it bigger. It is $4,399. So that is the amount of tax, we, property taxes for something we should have had in the report last month, and she sends her apologies. And then, with regards to the interest, she said that we are, oh, she created then invoice, and that invoice will be credited to us in next month. So the interest that we would have earned from that money in our account, it will be credited to us next month. So I will be sure to highlight that next month for the financials.
Does that come from the county?
Sorry, I said county earlier. I didn't mean to confuse you all. Village.
Oh, the village pays, pays that?
Well, because they delayed, it was on account of Bettina. She said that she was out of town for a while and was unable to make the property tax dispersment at the time that it was supposed to be dispersed for us in our readings. We, readings of the financial report for the board meeting, we missed out on several days of earned interest because of that delay. So that comes from the Village of Lake Bluff, that interest earned. Any questions so far on that?
I'm a little confused. So is the $4,301, that's, that's interest that we are, no, okay.
Sorry about that. That's just the property taxes.
That's just the dispersment, okay.
Yes, that was delayed last month. I don't have the number that for the interest that we are owed from the village.
It'd be a small number, though.
It's a minimum, yeah.
It is, but it's, it's still something because we would have earned interest on the $4,300 for the amount of days that it wasn't in our account. So just wanting to make sure we're above board with our bookkeeping.
Renee, does Bettina anticipate any more revenue coming between now and the end of our financial year?
Well, I can certainly ask her. Looking at the budget, I'm looking at here, I'll share again the screen back to the expenditure list.
There were like 10 under, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Pretty.
And yeah, we're just right at 98. So I can certainly follow up. You know, people do send in their taxes late. You know, the vast majority of people have paid their taxes in the village already, but I remember this happening in Glencoe and going to the board meetings. Towards the end of the fiscal year, we would just zero in on this number ever so closely. And then even into the new fiscal year, we would still have dispersments of property taxes from the previous year. It wouldn't be a lot of, it wouldn't be a lot of money, but it would be going into that previous fiscal year's property tax earned. So I'm hopeful we'll be able to, you know, get as close to zero as possible. So I can follow up with that and share it at our next Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, Renee, it doesn't quite balance out at the end of the fiscal year. There's a lag period into the new year that used to kind of catch up, so.
Right.
Typical.
Yeah, with, okay, good to know. Yeah, I was, I was anticipating the same type of thing might be the case here in Lake Bluff. So I will follow up on that. Thank you, Bill. Anything else on the property tax revenue?
Just for my identification, how does that work if we receive a payment that's after our current fiscal year? Do we then retroactively apply that to the previous fiscal year?
I know how it was done at Glencoe, but I might defer to another board member or some one of the managers on the call to speak to how we do it here. Bill, do you have a sense of that?
I don't, I would assume, I mean, just if, if the books were closed on a particular year, that any extra money would then be a plus for the, the next year, as opposed to opening the books and closing it again, but.
Typically, there's like two months overlap, you know, into a new fiscal year. They might not officially close the books 100%. At least that's my experience at previous workplaces. So then you do have that flexibility.
Right.
Especially invoices that might come in, even just not property tax related at all. Any sort of payments that come in, maybe the day of me running the reports for the board meeting, you know, but it's still technically within that budget year. So there's some flexibility there.
Yeah, they, they might hold it up till, you know, the latter part of May to close April.
I'll definitely ask Bettina as we are preparing for the end of the fiscal year. That was something I was curious about as well.
It seems to me there may even have been times once it was reconciled with the audit report that things kind of figured out, but it's always very small amounts.
Thank you both. Any other questions with the property taxes? Okay. All right. And so, moving on, I'm going to share my screen again. I have a lot of updates about the passport services, again, in my Director's Report, but I'll just say at this point of the review of the expenditures and revenues list, this was another extremely financially successful month for passport services at our library. One milestone I will share right now is that we set a new monthly record for passport revenue collected from during a month. So this is January 1st to January 31st, we collected $5,040. And that surpasses our previous record, but I think over $2,000 is what my report says. So that is the number here that's reflected of, and the reason that this is not, it doesn't line up with the way that we look at chronologically. This is the the amount that was received from the last closing of the books from last month. So another incredibly successful passport month with lots of revenue. In addition, I'll just say too, in terms of revenue, other things I wanted to highlight, we did receive $1,000 from District 65 to go towards the payment of our intergovernmental agreement. So I remember a couple of board meetings ago, Kathy, that was something you were curious about. So we did receive payment there. Not the full payment, but I have to follow up with staff to see when we might expect the remaining payment and who that might be from.
From. So that, that would remain, so we don't have District 115, this is a separate line.
It looks like the program, the intergovernmental agreement, and all the three districts that are a part of it, it's all one line.
That's the amount. Okay, good.
Yep. And managers, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. Just jump on. Right. And then the next thing I wanted to highlight, as I highlighted last month, our interest earnings are steady and lucrative. Again, a huge change from the previous fiscal year. On average, we're earning at least 2,000 a month from our earnings there. So very smart, sound financial decision there. Okay.
I wonder, I wonder too, and maybe this is for a Finance Committee meeting, but now that we have such significant reserves, and we're using a money market currently, Bill, maybe we could contemplate whether, and I don't know if we're precluded from this in any capacity as, as as the type of organization that we are, but if we could get a Treasury account and buy a ladder T-bill portfolio that we just roll over every month, that would basically get us to, you know, the, the effect of like kind of lending or federal funds rate plus and, and a slightly higher yield, couple of percentage points versus like a traditional money market.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if, if, if what we've got in reserve is separated from the village, whether the village has done everything on all the reserves and ours, and, and this is our our portion of the interest. But yeah, we, we could follow up in a finance meeting, Matt and Kathy and Renee and and put that as an action item to investigate.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah.
It is.
It's easy. I mean, I do it personally. It's, 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 you know. Simple. I don't know if as, as an institution, there are additional requirements or overhang, but.
No, that's right to ask, and certainly, working with the village, we can ask what they do in terms of their investments. I imagine if, I wonder if that's something that they explore. All right, I will make a note of that for our next Finance Committee meeting, which is something I need to schedule soon. Thanks, Matt. Okay, any other questions, comments about revenue this month? Okay. So before we go on to just approve this report, I do want to talk about expenditures separately. The first thing you might have noticed is that our medical insurance payments, we made many of them this month. And this was something that I just want to credit Lorenz for noticing in our bill keeping, in our, just financial keeping. She noticed that we hadn't been charged for any medical insurance bills since July of 2022. In fact, today, from Lauterbach and Ammon, we just received copies of the invoices that were paid this month totaling approximately $8,841. So we received separate invoices for July, August, September, October, November, December, and January. And so what you see here is a reflection of payments towards medical insurance up into, we're caught up basically up into January 31st. Now, I, I wonder if you are also interested to note that we are 92% of our budget spent. So I do need to look into that. I don't know why this would be so so much money, and we're so ill-prepared for the rest of the months that we have. We do still have February, March, and April to pay, and I mean, approximately, as I was looking at the invoices today before the meeting, it, there's a range between 4,000 and 5,000 a month. So what we have is not enough based on the spending, but I also don't know if I, I don't know. I need to have more information to share with all of you. So I don't have it at this point, but I will be following up with Bettina about how those are being paid and why it would be such a larger amount of money than we have even budgeted. Because we need to make sure we pay our insurance for our staff. So I wanted to give you an update on that. That was something that popped my attention right away. So I will follow up with an informational email to you all as trustees as soon as I find out the information of why, well, first of all, why there was a delay? Why was there a delay in us receiving the invoices for so many months? And why there is such a difference in cost?
Yeah, because, yeah, because if, if the 8,800 that was spent in January was catch up for a number of months, it, it doesn't make sense that we would have spent $79,000 if 8,800 was for three or four months worth.
Right, exactly. So, and I need to, and I'm meeting with Lorenz tomorrow to talk about credit cards and other things, which I'll talk about in a second, but this is a conversation to start with Bettina. Because our benefits come through the village. But the payment for those benefits come out of our library budget. So I need to gather more information for you all as trustees, so that we have a better understanding of what is going on here.
And Renee, one more thing I'd, I'd point out is with an $86,000 budget, that would mean we would expect to pay about just over $7,000 a month for the 12 months.
Which is, which is, when I was looking at the invoices, they ranged anywhere from 4,000 to 6,000. So on the one hand, with what you just said, that tracks, that's even less than what we budgeted. But what did we pay at the beginning of the fiscal year? And what are we paying now? Did we overpay? I don't, I don't know. So I need to jump into that, to your point. That's confusing.
And maybe it's not invoiced on like a 1/12 basis, but I would expect it to be the case. I don't I don't think we have any risk in our medical insurance. I mean, you pay your premium. I don't know if we as an employer are also covering co-pays or anything else. So I'm, I'm surprised to see that kind of month-to-month change.
Yes.
Yeah.
Me too.
Okay.
Even just from an invoicing perspective, why did it take this long? Or not invoicing, but charging perspective, why did they delay charging us for that long? So that is a financial priority of mine to look into. I can hope that we overpaid, maybe. I don't know. But we'll see. I don't want to promise anything. So that is medical insurance. I also wanted to highlight the building maintenance. So the costs for the last month are more than you've seen in the last six months, probably. And there are a couple of reasons why, and when we get to the check register, you'll see them individually. But I just want to highlight that we are at 82% spent for building maintenance line. And that does not yet include the 8,000-plus charge to Murphy and Miller to remediate the HVAC that you all approved at the Emergency Board Meeting. We have approximately 6,000 left. So I just want to let you all know, at this point in February, I know we will be overspent in this line from a financial standpoint, and we will talk more about this at a Finance Committee. We talked about a couple of things. We know that we have revenue from passports as an overage for the balance for the year. We are underspent in our contingency. In fact, we haven't touched our contingency this year. And we also haven't spent any money in our exterior building improvements. Now, I know we wanted to paint the library. We have other projects that we wanted to do, but that is, I believe, $6,000 of exterior improvements that we still have not. That's down here. Furnishings is overspent, but you can see here, $6,000. We have not spent any of it yet. So so there is money for the building maintenance costs that are coming up. I just want to let you know from a budget standpoint, this line will be overspent. But yeah, sorry, did someone have a comment to say? Oh, I thought I heard something, sorry. Okay. Oh, and this also includes, again, you'll see in the check register, our vendor Gary Levin, who helped us with a clogged staff sink and replacement of the lights in the first floor bathroom, both of which we expedited right away as safety and staff concerns. So I do want to just mention building maintenance. I also wanted to highlight, again, I will talk about this in the check register, but we have a considerable charge from maintenance grounds. So our vendor Reyes does our beautiful landscaping in the front of the library, and he also helps manage his snow removal and ice. Kathy was in the library today and signing checks. Thank you, Kathy. And we were talking about that. And we dug into that invoice, and the reason for the cost is how icy it was for the last month. So there were a lot of visits for ice dispers, or excuse me, ice dispersment, salt dispersment to, to the library grounds. Lastly, I want to highlight professional development. You saw last month that it was very, we hadn't spent really much of anything. I think it was about 33%. But the library, and I'm really proud about this fact, we have a history of supporting staff who who take library coursework. So library-related coursework, whether it is an LTA program, a library technical assistant degree, or they actually go for their masters. We have a history of supporting tuition reimbursement up to $1,000. And we have two staff members currently enrolled in library school, Anna Fifehouse, who's our full-time adult programming librarian, and Vanessa Howland, who is part-time assistant who works both circulation and in the Youth Services Department, and also does programming. So we were able to support tuition reimbursement for both of those staff members for their library coursework that they took, which is incredibly helpful because those library skills and information that they gather in coursework applies directly and benefits to our library and the customer service our residents receive. So thank you to Anna and Vanessa for your work. So I wanted to highlight that amount. My last, lastly, I apologize. I keep thinking. My last, lastly, I apologize, I keep thinking that this was the last one. I wanted to highlight the spending in computer equipment. Where are you? Computer, man, computer services. No. Where are you? Firewall. Where are you?
You're down further, down near where the, the cap there.
Thank you. I was looking at computer services and then I got confused. Thank you, Bill. Computer equipment here, budgeted nineteen thousand dollars. We've talked about how that was really for the, the replacement of our firewall, which we're very excited about to keep a safe and secure environment here in our library for staff and also for the public. This is the final installment of payment that came through in the last budget month to CBI. But there is also an additional check to CBI for a brand-new replacement battery and battery pack, which I'll talk about during the check register, too. So all of that to say, that is the, the full report that I have for revenue and expenditures. Any questions? About anything I've covered or anything else that I haven't covered? Okay, hearing none. Do I have, this is an action item in roll call, do I have a, a motion to approve the January two thousand twenty-three revenue and expenditure report?
I'll move to approve the revenue and expenditure report. This is Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Matt.
Thank you, Matt. So this is a roll call vote. I'm gonna go through my Zoom here. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Zoudi.
Aye.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff. Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes the, or the revenue and expense report of January two thousand twenty-three has, twenty-three has been approved. Thank you all. Great. Now I'm gonna go back to the packet, because that is where the rest of the information lives. Excuse my scrolling here. So next is the review of the balance sheet. Our now, just referring back to Bettina's comments about how the interest earned will be reflected next month. I'm going to follow up with her, but my guess is that this is where we will see it accounted for on our balance sheet here. So this is the current balance sheet of January two thousand twenty-three. Nothing, no surprises at this point. I was learning. Thank you to Katie and Martha for all their training on making sure we have enough in our account to pay our bills and the three times a month that we transfer our funds from the Illinois Fund to to pay our bills. So it was a great learning month for me this month. Just scrolling through here. Any questions on the balance sheet here? If none, do I have a motion to approve the January two thousand twenty-three balance sheet?
I'll make that, I'll move through approval of the balance sheet.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
This is Bonnie, I'll second.
Okay, and Kathy or Bill, can you remind me, is this a roll call vote or is this a voice vote?
Usually we've done the balance sheet and the revenue as one.
Oh, thank you.
As one.
Okay, I will make that change for next month. I apologize. All right, well, given that we haven't approved it technically yet, we should probably have a separate approval process this time around. So I'm gonna go ahead and do another voice vote. And next month I will include the balance sheet as part of the approval process of the review and expenditures. Okay, trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Zoudi.
Aye.
Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The January two thousand twenty-three balance sheet has been approved. Now, moving on to checks. Our check register. Where you are. So just to highlight, I did catch that voided check this time around. So the check numbers do match with the checks that we were had signed this month. So we are all set with that. The check numbers are in the agenda here. A couple of checks I wanted to highlight for your attention tonight. Well, first, I just wanted to say I'm very much looking forward to meeting with Lorenz tomorrow. She and I are going to do some process improvement work on our invoicing and check process. For those of you that have signed checks in our officer group, we have a lot of checks. And as Kathy has shared with me a couple of times, there's a significant amount of check fraud out in society. And so anything we can do to reduce the amount of checks would also really help secure and avoid any risk for us as an organization. So a lot of our managers, all of our managers and I myself have a credit card. And so we're looking to process and prove payment as much as we can for our vendors that accept credit cards. That will help lower our risk of check fraud and also really just help staff workflow. It's gonna be a lot easier for the signers, for those of us prepping our financials. So I just wanted to share that overview update with all of you. So we're gonna make sure to prioritize efficiency, but also transparency, so that you all can see still what those credit card charges are, as opposed to just seeing one large amount and not knowing what those individual charges are, what fund line they're supposed to come out of. That's how we currently have our checks today now. So for example, you can see here, this is a credit card, first bank card, and each individual charge is itemized. And it relates to the fund code, which is over here. So we're going to continue with that process, making sure that, you know, the public knows and, and you all know how we're spending our money. But again, using that credit card to help create a more efficient process. So just starting with that overview of what you can expect for next month. So I mentioned the firewall. CBI is the vendor, Computer View Inc. So there are two charges here to CBI. This is the charge for the firewall, the seven thousand six hundred forty-five. That's the last charge. We are required to pay for that. And then there was an additional charge for seventeen hundred approximately. And this is for a new battery for our server. I think the library might have already been on a plan to receive this new battery. It's certainly anything, nothing that I instigated. I think the library, the library was already on a replacement plan with CBI for this prior to my appointment. So it's, it's new, it's efficient, it's more efficient than the battery pack we had before. And the cost includes freight installation. So that's what this other cost is right here. During that time, I also got a tour of our server equipment, which was very helpful. So just wanted to add that. A new name on our check register is Gary Levin. This is Gary's Handyman Services. Gary is the the contractor that I worked with to help fix the clog staff sink and then later to hang the new flag and replace the lights in the first floor bathroom. These were more emergency situations, given that our current, our, our former process was to work with a local vendor or a local maintenance person. But Gary is insured and he is also licensed to work in plumbing, electrical, and he's also a painter. So there could be various projects we could work with him on. And so that minimizes risk for the library in finding a new vendor for our maintenance work. So that, this is the sink that he helped unclog. So I just also want to mention for transparency, there are reimbursements for trustee Church, Graziano, and Meyerhoff for various hospitality supplies. And so I believe this was for the director's reception event, if I'm not mistaken. Or perhaps also Jenny for the preschool event. I'm not sure.
One of them was for the staff reception, the pizza party.
Pizza party, yeah.
Oh, got it. Okay, so this is just a few months later. Okay, got it. Perfect. Glad we are reimbursing you all. So thank you all for that. In addition, I do want to highlight Murphy and Miller. Where did you go, Murphy and Miller? I think it is already passed here, sorry.
Yeah, one, five, five, two, three.
Yep. So this invoice, this check is to pay the invoice for the emergency work of five hours labor at emergency pay of one ninety-two an hour. This was for the exhaust that was being dispersed into the vestibule, into the museum, and into the director's office. And this was the work to fix temporarily the issue that we were having with the flu exhaust and the clean air intake to find a solution to get us to ultimately to the repair, which you all approved at the emergency board meeting. So I did want to highlight this cost. And I'm you can talk about this maybe at a finance committee meeting, too, but there is an additional cost to tech systems for emergency support. I have an item to show and tell you. This is the three-inch piece of wire that was damaged during the Murphy and Miller visit to the library when they were fixing and remediating the issues with the heat in the library building. You might remember we were without really consistent heat in the library side, in addition to the gas and exhaust issues we were having in the museum. At the time, I was in the only one in the building with a person from Murphy and Miller. And all of a sudden, the alarm went off, and that's when the fire department was called again the next day to try and figure out what was going on. And it was an issue with the alarm. And so when we called, when I figured out who to call, tech systems manages the alarm. And they had to send technicians out across two days to evaluate all of our wiring, because we were receiving a ground fault error on our alarm system. And that is because this was found at the same site location where Murphy and Miller staff were. As I'm told, there's a very little room in the duck work as they're up in the ceiling evaluating situations. And so this happened to happen during that visit. And so there is a subsequent charge for tech systems to fix the electrical issue. And staff will remember, we had this alarm going off in the building every day, and it cleared every twenty-four hours until it was fixed in a new, this was removed from the wiring and replaced. So that's what this charges.
Can we charge that back to Murphy Miller?
So that, that's the question I am going to pose to the committee or to the board. I don't know if we've done anything like that before, but this was a direct result of their work. So I, at this time, I don't have a way forward, but I do want to be transparent about the cost and what happened.
I mean, if they're charging us a hundred and ninety-two dollars an hour, that's almost a four-hundred-thousand-dollar annual salary. I'd expect that they wouldn't be damaging our things.
I don't disagree. Would the board like to discuss this now or put it at the end of the meeting for discussion or propose to have the finance committee discuss this? I don't know if there's precedent for doing anything like this and going back to a vendor and asking them to remed, to take on the charge.
You know, part of me wants to keep Murphy and Miller happy because they do know our system so well and I, I know they're, they're getting a lot of a lot of hourly wages from us, not to mention all the equipment and so on and so forth, but I would not want to be this picky, I guess. That's just me.
Are they, are they aware that they did this?
Yes, the technician here was there during that day. He said, I might have clipped a wire, I'm not sure, but that can sometimes happen. And because the way that tech systems do their work, they have a checklist of all of the things they have to get through to make sure that it's not this, that, and the other. And by the time they got into the wiring, they even told me ground fault warnings are very complicated and sometimes pricey for this reason. It could be a myriad of things. So the technician himself kind of admitted fault to it, at least knowing that, like, he said, there wasn't a lot of space up there. I was crawling around, you know, all of your duck work is lit on top of wires, and there's just not, not a lot of space in the design of it. We could have that conversation, but I wanted to propose that to the board.
I mean, I think it's reasonable to bring it up anyway.
Right. We're, we're gonna use them for, for more work. They, they could probably discount the new work if, rather than on that, that next, on a next project.
Yeah.
Sending an email to them or something saying, hey, look, this happened. It caused us to have to incur additional cost. And so I, I would, I would kind of document what the technician said from Murphy and Miller, what happened, what it cost us as soon as possible and send it over to them with something so, you know, we we expect dispensation or something like that. Sorry, Matt, you were, you were saying?
Yeah, sorry, just latency in the line, or even a partial make-whole. I think your, your point is, is the best method of redress, like make them aware, document it, see if they come back with a solution. And if not, you know, we can.
Okay.
What was the amount, Renee? Again, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it and I can't.
No, you're fine. It all looks the same after a while. One thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars from Tech Systems Incorporated. Kathy, I know you're back on. I just want to offer, if you had any thoughts, we're sharing feedback about following up with Murphy and Miller about.
I'm having some troubles here. Okay, hold on. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, but you might need to mute your other.
I've been listening and I fully agree that they're responsible for any, any reputable vendor is responsible for their work. And they've worked for us for a long time. We had a great relationship. And I, I don't, can't imagine that they wouldn't take responsibility for this and move on. So was this Mike by any chance? Who was the, the, okay?
No, and I wrote down the names of the technicians. This is the one that helped put together the computer system for the library.
Well, no, I think it's just plain and simple, especially when you stepped up and said, I may have done this. I mean, he's taking responsibility of the company is, we have an excellent response relationship. This isn't thousands of dollars that we're denying them for their work. So I think I think we'd be kind of an oddball customer not to hold them responsible for it. So, yeah, I, I wouldn't hesitate to just say my best to duck this for future invoices.
In light of what everybody else has said, I, I, I agree with what we decided to just let them know, document, and let them know and, and see what they come back with. And if they ignore it, then maybe ask for some compensation.
And the reason, thank you both, the reason I wanted to have this conversation now before the check register is approved is so that we can discuss this openly if we want to include or not include this check in the approved checks. So when I, when I propose, or you know, when I open the floor for making a motion, when I, when I propose or you know, when I open the floor for making a motion, um, you know, that of course is on the table if someone wants to say all of the checks except, but um, I haven't heard yet um, any hesitation to pay the check to tech systems at this time. Um, so I just wanted to uh, reiterate. That's what I was hearing. Okay, um, thank you all for the discussion. I think transparency is really important um, in our financials as we all do. Um, I wanted to let you know about that and I will follow up with Murphy and Miller with an email um, to let them know. And I have the name of the technician written down, although I can't recall right now. Um, and I will refer back to the date of the visit and, and the occurrence of what happened. The last check I wanted to highlight is for nineteen dollars to the village of Lake Bluff. Um, and that is uh, something Kathy asked about, um, but that is our regular um, elevator maintenance. And so um, you may be wondering why we are paying the village of Lake Bluff, um, but this is for the regular annual um, uh, not review, but audit of the, the maintenance of the elevator to make sure that it is still safe for public to ride. Um, and so that.
Is that like the certification? Because we have a contract with an elevator maintenance company. But I'm just, I was thinking about this all day. I think when you look in the elevator, it's always certified. That may be the certification.
Yes, so what happened, what happened was they came in and did their thing and left the certification form um, for me. And so I um, replaced it in the elevator and so it is currently up to date. It was already, it was overdate, it was overdue by a couple of months since November. So um, at this point, we're all caught up with that. So yes, it is the certification.
Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Making sure I covered everything. Okay, yes, any questions about um, this month's check register? Check dispersment report, excuse me. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve January two thousand twenty-three monthly checks? Number fifteen four nine zero and checks one five four nine two two or dash one five five three nine. Janie, the numbers are in the agenda.
Yeah, I was just looking. I, I had taken a quick peek and seen the the fifteen four eight nine, but that was on January thirty-first, so um.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
So these are checks from, is it the day of or the day before our last um, board meeting? Um, or the day after um, through today? When is January nineteenth? But the numbers are there in the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the checks from January um, two thousand twenty-three?
So move, it's Kathy.
Thanks Kathy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it's Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Um, this is a roll call vote. Um, so I will go through my Zoom list here. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee George.
Hi.
Trustee Heintzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
All right, January checks fifteen four ninety and fifteen four ninety-two through fifteen five thirty-nine have been approved. Thank you all. Okay. I am going to stop sharing my screen at this point and we will move on to the next item in our agenda, which is committee reports. Um, we've had a lot of committee meetings, several committees have met more than once in the last month. Um, the first committee to share an update um, will have the finance committee.
Okay. Um, we, we met um, uh, January twenty-fourth um, primarily to review the second revision um, for the budget. Uh, we identified a, a few more things that we wanted to uh, to, to look at and update. Um, we had some action items uh, from that meeting. Um, we, we modified some of the accounts. But I think we've, we've probably got another meeting that we need to uh, schedule yeah, in the next uh, few weeks, Renee, just to finalize um, the last changes that we went through. Um, we, that was basically, yeah, we, we, without going through every single line item, but um, there were probably uh, three, three accounts on the revenue side and six on the expenditure side that we revised. And I think we had an action item to um, check with Bettina a little bit on the restricted and unrestricted donation lines.
Anything else Kathy or Matt to add to that? Check in and report. Thank you, Bill. Okay.
Nothing for mine. No.
Yes, I'll schedule that meeting um, for the next week or two. We'll try and find a date. Um, and then we'll finalize that proposed budget and then it will be brought to the full board. Um, we could do that next month, um, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll be in a position, yeah, I think we, we should be in a position to do that.
Great. Any questions for the finance committee? Okay, thank you, Bill. Next, um, the human resources committee. Jenny, do you have an update for us?
Oh, sure. Um, our committee met on February tenth. Um, and our goal was to revise the documents and review the timeline for the director's evaluation. Um, so we had a good discussion, but I'm going to be meeting with Renee on Friday and we're going to have a few documents, I think, prepared because we're going to schedule another meeting um, prior to presenting to the board.
Janie, anything to add there? Thank you so much, Jenny. Great update.
No, I think that's pretty much it.
I myself am looking forward to the um, to getting the director lined up with the same schedule for performance evaluations with the rest of the staff. So I think that, and the staff ourselves have already developed that timeline, which I know I still have to send you, Jenny. Um, so that it lines up well enough in advance so that the staff can receive their um, their raises for the new fiscal year, their performance review all at the same time and before the new fiscal year so that it can go into effect by May one. Um, so thank you to the department heads um, for their work on this timeline. So we kind of push things up a little bit on our end for staff evaluations. But I think that will only help us in the end to um, make sure, you know, staff have all the information they need and we are able to pay staff at their new rate, starting the first day of the new fiscal year. So lining all that up together, the director will be aligned with that um, review process too. Okay, thanks so much, Jenny.
Thank you.
All right, and so um, next is special topics committee. Kathy, would you like to provide the update for this one?
Um, sure. We um, met most recently on uh, February thirteenth. And uh, we had several minutes, the meetings to review. Um, basically, we discussed, reviewed uh, staff observations about the new placement of furniture, which to sum it up says it's the worst of the best solutions. It's not great, but it's holding its own and seems to be people accept to the pu- the public and staff are, are dealing with it pretty well. Um, we've determined that there's several policy reviews that need to be looked at. Uh, Matt and Bonnie had done some groundwork and reviewing uh, um, policies from Cook, from Wakanda, and I may, I, I haven't sent you the minutes yet, so I may be wrapping some of these uh, uh, library groups incorrectly, but I've got group memorial and there's a Cook Memorial and then Aspen Branch, Wakanda, um, Deerfield, uh, Renee has knowledge of Deerfield and Glencoe. Um, so basically what we're finding out that there's a lot of policies that need reviewing and uh, Renee was saying best practice would be that all policies reviewed on an annual basis, which, which would be pretty much possible to do for our library in, in short order. Uh, but to set a schedule, get through, which isn't even on the books right now for our staff, but to set up um, technology, policy review as well as other policy. Get them all reviewed in the long run and then in the short run, we have two to three a year kind of thing. So certainly something to plan for and for um, long range planning, I think, to, to set as a priority. Um, but in the short order, it really just focus on these, these policies. Um, Renee led the discussion on uh, computer loose use policy briefly. Uh, policy needs to be readable, improve organization, improve length, eliminate duplication, not be too specific. It goes on. She was, she's really very thorough on her, her recommendations. Um, important is the distinction of filters in computers. Filters are um, youth computers, they're not on um, adult computers and that should be clear to the staff, to patrons, to users. Uh, it certainly was not clear uh, this spring uh, from the conversations we had with kind of different stakeholders. So in terms of what we're doing next, we want to make clear the uh, role of parents. We want to review children's policies. We want to uh, review wireless usage network, library user conduct, computer use, safe child policy. Uh, Renee predicts this could easily take three or four, two to three months um, in collaboration with staff committees, the full board. Um, additional discussion was on privacy screening. That's an intervention that may or may not be necessary. Um, replacing possibly the carols with a flat powered table. Um, managing all the wiring and stuff like that goes along with it. Um, we recognize as a committee that we need to fa- determine a full report at the end of our meetings. Um, and uh, summarize all the work we've done, set goals for the future, uh, communicate with the patron who brought this to our attention. Um, and report back to board and other stakeholders such as the patron, the village schools and the friends. Um, so that is something to be worked on, the policy. There was a lot of work ahead of us. We've really done quite a good work at this time, so that's pretty much it. Anybody has any questions? Glad to go over it.
Janie, anything to add there? I know you were at that meeting.
No. I think that's pretty accurate.
I can share a brief update since that meeting. I had an opportunity to speak with um, the patron whose family experienced this incident. Her name, her name is Ally. Um, it was a really great conversation. Um, I spent a lot of time just getting to know her, um, her background, her role in the community, what she likes about Lake Bluff and what she likes about the library. I told her also a full report of everything that we've done um, and what I myself am interested in doing. Um, we talked after the special topics meeting happened. So I was able to share with her the next steps that our committee has put forth, including that full report and the value of transparency that we have, even with our community stakeholders, that we are interested in sharing this report with the local schools, the park district. Um, and there was an immense amount of gratitude for that. Um, even emotion shared at how grateful she was to know that. Um, I shared with her just personally, I've been following the board meeting since before I got the appointment. I was really invested. I shared with her my background in youth services and the importance of finding that balance between um, being as safe as we possibly can as a public library while also supporting um, rights to access. And we had a great conversation about how she has learned um, about the libraries in general, how they work, how they function, and that this is something that can't happen in libraries, that it is a public place just as any other. And we talked about how, you know, even something like this could happen with someone's own personal device, because we have even less security and access to someone's own personal device in a library. So um, it was incredibly open, thoughtful conversation, lots of um, lots of listening on my part, lots of validation of what her family has experienced and um, a commitment, a very strong personal commitment to this process and to review um, our practice and po- and procedures to make sure that they um, are in line with our policy and also um, to look for any future opportunities to revisit situations like this in the future. So for example, if we ever were to remodel that area or computers were to ever move, you know, this is a value, we need to consider this in, in all future planning. Um, that there is, you know, the thoroughfare of people visiting the library and we can't always um, control that. But we also can plan ahead and intentionally um, uh, consider all of our various audiences in our library. And so just from a very like human place, I was very um, uh, pleased and connected as we were talking, was about an hour long conversation. She felt very heard. Um, these are her words and uh, she said at the end, she's looking forward to um, uh, visiting the library once again. And I think that's really important to share with you all tonight because she did at some point say, I will never come to the Lake Bluff Public Library again. So by the end of that conversation, that's something that she expressed to me as something she's very interested in. We might have coffee at some point. Um, you know, I, I really um, I was really grateful for the open conversation that we had because it really felt like she also understood position that the library is in. We do want to make sure that people and especially children are safe as possible while also recognizing that um, we have uh, the right to access in our libraries and there are other things that while we try to control, we always can't control. And so the value of transparency was appreciated and just the, you know, the connection that I made with her. So very happy to share that report.
Great, thank you.
Renee, I'm so happy that, that this all worked out. Um, it sounds to me like you had a commitment to spending a great deal of time with her and, and um, she felt your sincerity very deeply. And I also feel like she has grown herself and that um, wow, what more can you ask to come out of a library experience?
We talked about learning. We talked about learning for both of us, that the library as an organization, when you know better, you do better. And then she talked about her own personal learning and um, yes, I, I'm really, I'm really hopeful in this conversation and um, she talked about, you know, apologies she made to staff and individual conversations, um, you know, more recently that um, she was hopeful in that and, and so um, it was really the best outcome I could have. I don't know if I could have expected any better outcome, really.
Fabulous. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you all have been really doing the work here, so just kind of tied it up. So thank you all for your commitment to this work and for the creation of the committee and um, the direction in this way. I appreciate it. The library appreciates it. All right, last committee, um, to make an update, building and grounds, perhaps the most active of our committees um, since I started on January third. Um, Janie, would you like to provide the update?
Of course, um, we met on the sixteenth with quite an agenda. As a matter of fact, we weren't not even able to finish everything on our agenda. Um, but um, we had minutes, oh, we also met on um, February second as well. So we had uh, two sets of minutes to approve at that meeting from, from the end of January and the beginning of February. Um, we talked about, a little bit about our sprinkler system, which I'm um, still hoping to get some clarification on because um, it's not clear to us at all whether uh, we have an operative um, sprinkler system in the library. Um, it says in the Ingrid Anderson report that the, that the original part of the building, which is us is not in fact protected, but there's a sprinkler system up there. So we all need clarification on that. Um, we'll talk about the library director's spending limit in a moment. So I'll just tell you the other things we discussed. We talked about um, the book drop. Um, you may be aware that the, the drive up book bin is toast and um, needs to be replaced. And so Renee has been doing a great deal of work. To find uh a um a bin that will, a book. Retrieval system where the bins will work inside the building and in the new bin and. She's got some proposals in mind for that. We talked about replacement of the water heater and I believe Renee had someone out this morning. Did you have three different people out this morning, three different?
Between yesterday and today and um after your report, I'll share that too. I have all the estimates ready to go to share with you tonight.
And then um we had um. We were talking about whether or not we needed permits from the Village of Lake Bluff for the flu work. And we're going to have to have done and while that was being discussed, another problem with with uh. Flu work on the museum side of the building, there's some piping on the east side of the building. That um needs some looking at and I believe you met with Jeff. From the village this morning at bright and early at eight AM to to look at that, so. Renee has been very busy and that's not even mentioning some of the things she's told us about such as the. The sink being. Stopped up sink in the in the uh staff room being repaired and. Oh, there were problems with the front door not locking properly and there have just been all sorts of. Issues with the building. Hopefully, we will take care of all the gremlins sometime in the next. Few months and this part of our lives can settle down. But the the most important thing that we talked about has to do with this and. It came up in B and G because of all these little uh incidental expenses. Kathy had pointed out, and I think we discussed this uh at the last board meeting, I I was looking at. It was in the minutes about how there was a five thousand dollar threshold. For the library director being able to spend money uh without prior board approval. And um that had been the amount for at least eight years and possibly longer. And we wanted to look at increasing that. And so um we spent, excuse me, quite a bit of time. I don't know if Renee, you want to pull that up? There you go. So at the top of that document is what's in the current. Wording and it says the five thousand dollars on on any one single item. Until I looked at this, I did not realize that there was an emergency. Clause in there for an additional two thousand dollars with the approval of any two trustees. That was news to me. And also the fact that the library may spend uh in excess of twenty thousand dollars only after completing the formal bid process. That is also out of date as as uh Renee did a little bit of research and found out. So those, it it's M and G dash four point two that we needed to look at and so. We tinkered with this quite a bit. And came up with um some possible wording to spend up to ten thousand dollars on contracts. System services, equipment and or repairs without prior uh board approval. Then um in case of extreme emergencies resulting in service disruption. The director may spend another two thousand five hundred in addition to the ten thousand with the written approval of any two library trustees. And then finally, the last sentence, the library may spend in excess of twenty five thousand only after. The formal bid process and that is by state statute. So uh those were the three changes we were looking to make to the. Policy about. Authority to spend and so. I guess we still, the thing that we tabled, just to finish up my B and G report, the thing that we tabled was going over in great detail, the Murphy and Miller. Uh I I'm sorry, the um Ingrid Anderson report that Sean gave us on the state of the building. We will meet again soon to finish up that part of it. So yes, we've been busy.
I just want to thank Bonnie, Kathy and Janie for their availability at almost any hour of the day with all of these situations that have ro- that have come up. So to loop back to the emergency meeting that. Several of you attended when we approved the proposal from Murphy and Miller for the HVAC work. We started the conversation about the director limit. Kath, you may remember Kathy proposed the discussion. And it was decided that wording was going to be drafted. At B and G committee level and then be brought back to this group to be discussed, reviewed. And possibly approved depending on what the board determines. And so at that time, we really only discussed this first line, this first vote as it were. It was the time between the emergency meeting and the B and G committee meeting where. Thank you to Janie bringing this information up from the policy about the emergency spending. And the bid process that we found that additional information and so. I believe um what we discussed was um discussion and potentially a vote on this first. Decision or this first possible change to increase the limit. And then discussion and potential approval of the second limit, which is slightly increased from two thousand to twenty five hundred. The emergency amount. Um and then this would get wrapped up in the approval too. This is, this is just a change based on the state standards for. Public library bidding process. And so I was able to um to find that information of what that minimum. Minimum threshold for bidding is for libraries. So that's an update to align with state statute.
Could there be in a um, sorry, am I muted? No, I'm not.
No, you're good.
So the question, could there be an extreme emergency with, which would not necessarily result in. Service disruption but would also need to be taken care of right away? To avoid resulting damages to the building, the facility.
We did discuss that. Um Bonnie, Kathy, Janie, do you have any responses to John's question?
Well, John, I I I think that when it comes to disaster planning. You really need a crystal ball. You can probably talk to experts about this kinds of, this kind of thing and then then there's still going to be. Something that you haven't considered that could go wrong. So yeah, that's that's definitely possible. And while we're talking about that, I think, you know, that as far as the ten thousand. Bumping the um spending limit up to ten thousand from five thousand and the emergency. From two thousand to two thousand five hundred were just arbitrary numbers that came off the top of my head and so. That's open for discussion too.
Kathy had originally suggested seventy five hundred to ten thousand at that first meeting too. So you you two are aligned in that way. Bonnie or Kathy, anything to add?
Yeah, we went around and around on this vote too um and what the lit, what what should be written to that and I I felt. We were coming up with a lot of scenarios and from most of them, I was thinking they all would fall into an insurance category, which would be reimbursed anyway. Also, if we, it really was, I mean, if something really happened that we cannot anticipate and we needed more than twelve thousand dollars. You know, quickly, we would only have to get four trustees together in some way to approve spending. So um I I have no problem with increasing it if you all want to, but we were also, we were kind of thinking with, we're in the same. Framework as the previous language, we just increased the dollars appropriately. But you know, we can certainly increase that as the board recommends.
No, I I wasn't, I really wasn't think uh focusing so much on the on the uh on the amount is. You're defining an extreme emergency, you're limiting it to one that results in service disruption. There's, if there's no service disruption, there's no extreme emergency, basically.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a limitation on the on the definition of extreme emergency.
Emergency. So if we, if we deleted resulting in service, we could still have an extreme emergency.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy with that and leave it to discretion of the of the director.
Yeah, so delete resulting in service disruption.
Yeah, it's a limiting factor is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll see, it takes a while to see this stuff.
I appreciate that. Well, and with any policy change, we, I I'm sure it's practice here to that we. Send policy changes to our legal representation for review. So that's something we do here too. This isn't a Word document, this is a PDF, but I'm marking down and Janie too even for the minutes to remove the phrase. Or or just open it up to any other comments from the board. This is John's recommendation, Kathy seems to be supportive. Comments on that suggested word change.
Yeah, I think removing the the limitation on extreme emergency is appropriate. So I I support the recommendation that John makes and then with regard to the dollar amount of it, one percent of the budget is is a good threshold. And then if we look at recent experience, you know, or. You know, the 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 piping or the the ductwork is as an example, that that's been a roughly a eight to ten thousand dollar expense. So it looks like. At least in some of these instances recently, that that would be a sufficient amount to keep from hamstringing remediation.
Others? I could also entertain.
Deleting resulting in service disruption.
Yes.
Well, we're leaving in extreme emergency. Yeah, right, right.
So removing the phrase resulting in service disruption.
Right, thanks, Jen.
So that takes us back to closer to what the original language was.
And I remember the phrase service disruption coming up at the emergency meeting and so.
Yes.
It was a qualifier, we weren't sure if we needed. And so it sounds like so far the discussion is we might not need that qualifier. Any other reflections?
Would we be making a motion to move forward with this correct changed language pending. Legal review?
Yes, and that would be true for any policy review or approval at the board level. That it would be pending legal review.
We'll vote on it and then you'll talk to legal and if, if we hear nothing, it's been approved, otherwise you would let 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 us know.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So Kathy, you moved and I'll second. You moved, yes?
Did she? Okay, I was listening carefully, but thanks.
Was that a motion, Kathy?
Well, do we vote on one, two and three individually or is it all one?
So originally, we had discussed at the committee meeting, there was interest in voting on them separately because they're two separate. Well, certainly I'd recommend this amount in um because of the amount here. And it's a good uh best practice, I've been told is if it's related to money in any ways, it should be a vote. And so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm a library director, is authorized to spend up to ten thousand dollars on contracts, system services, equipment and or repairs. Without prior board approval.
Any, do I have a second? Thank you, Bonnie. So this will be a roll call vote. I'll start with trustee Meyerhoff.
Bye.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Bye.
Okay, motion carries. Um the amount approved for the director to spend. That is authorized to spend, it has been increased to ten thousand dollars. So with this second vote or proposal, I'll I'll make um, I'll open the floor for a motion. Regarding the extreme emergency clause in the M and G four point two policy.
I motion to, in case of extreme emergency, the library director may spend two thousand five hundred dollars in addition to ten thousand dollars. With the written approval of any two library trustees.
Do I have a second?
Do you want that pending uh legal oversight also?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I, sorry, I have one more. This is John. Do we want to say up to twenty five hundred? Is, so it's parallel to the.
Yes.
Okay, that's a good call, John.
Good change.
In case of extreme urgency, the library director may spend up to twenty five hundred dollars in addition to ten thousand dollars. With the written approval of two library trustees pending legal review.
Do I have a second?
This is Bonnie, one second.
Thank you, thank you, Bonnie. All right, this is another roll call vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Heitzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And so there is, in my um recommendation, there is no need to. Have a third vote. This would just be a policy. Change. It's all one policy and this would only be an update to the amount based on Illinois state statute. So the board does not advise for any change here because the board doesn't govern public library law. It's determined by the state, so um this will be included in the policy change as a whole. The update to twenty five thousand dollars um for the formal bid process. So just to clarify. But we wanted to highlight that for all of you just because it is all related in the same policy.
Do you just want to the last two decimal places, just keep it consistent with everything else?
Thank you. In the policy write-up, we will make sure to do that. Thank you, Bill. Okay, any further questions about this? Thank you so much, Janie, for that great update and for um leading into this part of the meeting. With that, I'm going to go to the next item that I added to the agenda here tonight. And this is related to Building Grounds, as you already heard um from Janie. This is the proposal. Of the book drop. How can I describe it in the most succinct way possible? This is the only option that we have. For the library, given our limitations outdoors for the location of the book drop. We discussed this um at great detail at Building and Grounds. But there is a finite amount of space that we have on the concrete slab outside of the library, south of the building along Oak. The other book drop options by the various vendors do not fit that slab. This is the only option for that space. Um and we opted to move forward with making a proposal tonight. For the board to review. It was going to be above the original director limit, um but even for the sake of transparency, I think it's still worth. A discussion and approval at this meeting. What I've done here and you all have had at least a little bit of time to review this. What I've done is identify the specs and specifically the pricing. The base price is five thousand two hundred ninety nine dollars. But we also at the library do need an additional cart. Uh this system comes with a cart included into that price. But the way that the workflow happens at the library is that as one cart that is stationed inside the book drop. Is sitting inside and receiving all of the materials as people drive up, we have another empty cart. Of the same size in the library. And so when staff do, as they do uh twice a day, right now they're doing it three times. Because one of our book drops is not functioning, staff have designated times twice a day to go out to that location on Oak. And come back, weathering the elements in the sidewalk with that cart, retrieving the items. And replacing the empty cart for the full cart that's inside the bit, the book drop. Reason I share this detail is because it's why we um, it's part of our workflow that. We don't have staff stay out in the weather elements to literally take every item out of the bin and put it into a new bin. To wheel into the library that. That efficient process of replacing the full cart with an empty cart, um, really helps reduce staff time and effort of bending and, um, and moving about. So, um, that's a process that we hope to keep. Um, and that's why we, uh, do recommend that second cart. Um, so in addition to the second cart, these are the other items that I would recommend, um, especially the reflective tape visibility kit. We have had at least one, if not two, if I'm mistaken, cars back into or hit the book bin because of its location on the sidewalk. I know that. Um, and so I'm hopeful the reflective cape can be helpful in that process, even given the fact that there really at night isn't that much light in that area. That could be a safety concern as well. So that's why I added it. Um, delivery, um, is added also. We don't have freight, we don't have a lift gate and that, and so we have to purchase that additionally. And so, um, I identify this as the estimated total. But what I would recommend or propose, um, for when we are ready for emotion, if we are ready for emotion is to, um, to have the pricing be up to $8,000. I don't anticipate I'll need more than seven, but I do, I do want to provide that, um, uh, flexibility and cost in case something comes up, um, as I make the call to place the order. Um, and we might need, uh, that flexibility. Building and grounds, anything else to share that is, um, would be helpful for the discussion right now about the book drop?
Renee, I have, I have a quick question. When we discussed this a few days ago, we were unclear as to whether or not the, um, company that would install a new book drop, would, if they would remove the old one, is that known at this time?
Um, I followed up and they do not, um, take away.
Okay.
So we would also need to, thank you for that reminder, because that could also be part of the, um, the maximum. If we say approve up to $8,000 in costs for the book drop, um, the book bin and any costs associated with, um, retrieval and disposal of the existing book bins and book drop. Thank you.
Does the, um, the, the, the one that you, um, uh, specified here Renee, does that stick out the same distance as the one that we have before or a little bit more, a little bit less?
We were, um, and that I need to, that's a good, um, question and I didn't do that estimate. Um, I don't, I'll, I can answer that, um, tomorrow. And when I go out and do the measurement, I don't want to say yes or no, because I'm not sure. Um, but in terms of the, the actual, like, um, the amount that it would take up, uh, on that concrete slab, um, it's approximately the same size of a footprint, excuse me, that was the word I was looking for. But in terms of how far out it juts out, um, I don't know. And so I can follow up on that.
Does our existing box get a, a significant amount of use?
Yes, yes, it does. And, um, at this time I would pass it off to Katie Horner who is on, um, was off today. Um, but I'm wondering if anyone on the call, either Jill, Martha, or Eliza would want to talk about, um, just the general, uh, usage of the book drop.
I mean, that one's our most popular book drop. It's the one that is usually fullest. Um, it depends on the day, how much we get, but, um, I would say it's, it's definitely the most used of the, the two book drops that we have.
I would also say we talked, thank you Martha, um, we talked at Building and Grounds about the importance of accessibility for people that may not want to stop into the library or can't. Um, and how, as I have heard, um, there was a lot of conversation with the village about finding the right location for this book drop. Given that Scranton itself can be pretty busy and if cars were to stop, um, that would maybe cause traffic disruption. Also, there are all those parking spaces and there probably is not an interest to remove a parking space at this point. Um, uh, so I do like the fact that it is on Oak, given there isn't as much traffic to consider. Um, but another piece of this is that, um, it is so far from the library. You know, it does impact staff in terms of their workflow. So we don't currently have an exit at the library to the back of the library to the parking lot so that we could, you know, just go in and out quickly. Um, the only exit that is on the main floor or the ground floor where we could put the cart out onto the sidewalk, um, is that front entrance because the back entrance has stairs. So we're unable to do that. But, um, I think if Katie were here, she would agree with Martha with what she said and, um, you know, I regularly see people stopping and, um, and using it, I mean, daily, daily. That's why we have two, two, um, pickups throughout the day because it will often, especially in the summer, I would imagine. Um, it will fill up to the point where we need to pick it up twice a day.
I would just add that, um, the one on Oak doesn't require anybody to actually find a parking spot in order to return library material. Um, so that is consideration.
It's a really good point, Eliza. Thank you.
Does the, um, does this one and the other one, are they about the same size? Will that extra, um, cart be able to be u- utilized for both when you go in and pick things up? Or it's the other ones?
I'm, I'm really sorry, Bill, that I'm smiling, but I think anybody on the Building and Grounds Committee knows why. Um, there are multiple sizes of the bins and, um, the one we have, okay, so we have a table on the inside of the building, right by our circulation desk where you can drop off your materials, right, um, when you come into the library. Um, and that is our indoor book drop, um, or material drop. You can put your DVDs in there too. The cart that currently exists in that space and the cart that currently exists out on Oak, those are the same size. They no longer make that size cart. And the reason that's a problem is because we have a customized designed table or part of our desk that sits on top of where that cart is, where on the other side, there's that, um, there's the slot. And this bin, you'll see, it's very tall and thin. While it's too tall to fit inside the building underneath that table. So when I started looking for the short ones to see if I could find, you know, something short, those short ones are too wide. And also what adds on top of this is that the new bins are designed with six inch casters, which is a huge selling point to us because as I've been told, staff have had to fix the wheels on these bin umpteen times to the point where there was even a staff injury at some point. Fixing one of these wheels so that they could keep working. The new bins are designed to be sturdier, more efficient and to have these new caster wheels, um, so that they support this side, this newly designed bin. Um, not going too much into detail, I don't want to, but it, we thoroughly researched the options. And unfortunately, there is no other option. So we, and, and on top of this, if we were to find a cart even, um, and maybe consider, you know, doing away with the table indoors. We still have a limited amount of concrete slab to work with on the sidewalk. This is the only book cart that's small enough to fit on that concrete slab, which is, as you might remember, right outside of our neighbor's house. And we don't want to go any bigger than the allotment that we've already been given.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other discussion questions?
We have a motion already proposed by the Building and Grounds Committee for this. I think.
Well, the Building and Grounds, um, voted, I believe, to, I'll have to look at my minutes, but, um, I believe we voted to bring it.
To make the proposal.
Make the proposal.
To the book, full board, yes.
So you would, you would like a motion to give you the flexibility of up to $8,000 for the purchase of a new book cart? Book bin, right?
That would be the wording I would use to include the cost of, um, labor for, um, delivering um, and removal of the, the old book drop and bins up to 8,000. I believe that that would be an appropriate recommendation.
Right, I still move.
Do I have a second? Thank you, John.
My second, Kathy.
All right, this is a roll call vote. Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Heitzelmann.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
Trustees Audi.
Hi.
And I feel like I can hear the cheers from staff. Um, so passes the motion to, um, purchase a new book drop and bins, um, for the cost of up to $8,000. Thank you all. Um, I think it was Jenny that, or I don't remember who it was, but said, I was so surprised at the cost of a book drop. Um, and I have to say, I don't blame you. Um, and then I also would say that those bins are the workhorses of the library. I was thinking about that and the book carts themselves that we use in the library to transfer materials in and out throughout the building. And I think that those, all of those bins are probably the most used equipment in the library. In fact, often libraries have a replacement schedule for their book carts every two to three years um, based on usage. So I, on behalf of all the staff, I just want to say thank you. Um, and the community thanks you. I know they're very eager for me to order that book drop tomorrow, um, as soon as possible and get that replaced. All right, um, so moving on to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for budgeting purposes, so do, will this be your mark to contingency?
Um, so we don't have enough in contingency to cover. Um, we could, and what my recommendation is, is to charge it to the line of what it is. So if this is library equipment or library furniture, that's what we would charge it to. In this case, um, I think we could do a couple of things, um, and I could make a recommendation to the finance committee as to where to charge this and just send an email and you can tell me what you think. Um, but, uh, my recommendation would either be, um, uh, library equipment, I need to get the actual name of the budget line here on my other computer.
And then while you're doing that, the follow-up question, given what you said before about the importance of these cards and um, what other libraries experience are, do we want to contemplate a, you know, replacement schedule and budgeting moving forward for the, at least for the cart?
100%. In fact, I don't know if that's ever been done, Martha, Eliza, or Jill, um, if we've ever had a replacement. Martha?
Uh, the replacement schedule has been when it has broken.
What's the useful life of a cart? A strong.
Good question, John. Well, I think we ran into some issues because one of the, um, book drops got ran into by a car and it also damaged the bin itself inside, right? Is that correct, Martha? Or did only the book drop get damaged?
Um, that's a good question and I don't fully remember. I would guess though, based on how rusted the bottoms of those carts are, that we've maybe had them for quite a while. Like, I don't know that they're the originals, but, um, it's, I wouldn't be surprised if it's been a while.
Yeah.
And, and I think it all depends on the library. We have about a half a block that staff are going out and in, out and in twice a day. Whereas other libraries, if their book drop is right outside the door, you know, that's not much effort that has, that bin has to go through. Um, circling back to the budget code, um, we could consider this to be charged to exterior building improvements, although that is a flexible way of thinking about building. Um, and also we could consider library equipment. The library equipment line only has a thousand dollars budgeted to it. The library exterior building improvement, as you heard me mention earlier, um, we have not spent any of that money so far this year.
I think there's 6,000 in there.
6,000.
Right. Well, this thing is.
Painting. Don't forget that we still have to do that painting.
Yeah.
And so if that's something we want to prioritize this fiscal year, yes, that would also come out of that line.
Yeah.
Seems to me this is library equipment. Okay, that's where it would most logically fit to me.
We have a thousand budgeted for that, um. And so it will be overspent. So just looking at the financials, that's what you'll see. But again, with various, uh, line items, we would be able to pay for it, um, given the revenue of the passports and the overage and some of the other lines or the under spending of some of the other lines. We could talk about it more at finance too.
Yeah. We've got the interest, um, that, that is over budgeted. Uh, I mean, we've extra revenue coming from the interest earnings as well. That's another.
Absolutely. Yes. So if there's support, I can charge it to, um, library equipment and we can discuss further the implications on the budget as a whole at the finance committee meeting.
Sounds like a plan.
Yep, yep, that sounds good.
Okay. Thank you all again. I want to try and get you, get you out before nine, but I don't know, um. The next topic of new business is scheduling trustee representation at the 2023 Friends of the Library meetings. Bonnie, go ahead.
Renee, I, were we going to do hot water heater as part of Building and Grounds or no?
Yes, I'm sorry. I have it written down right here and it, yes, thank you.
But wait, from Building and Grounds, everyone.
I know. So much fun from Building and Grounds. Okay. The fun never ends. All right, let's go. So I'm been kind of busy these last couple of days. Uh, I have had wonderfully quick responses from three vendors um, that, uh, provide new hot water heaters. Thanks to Kathy's personal experiences with replacing her own hot water heater in her home, she was able to recommend a couple of feature, well, one specific feature, um, that is important to add. And I will tell you Kathy, um, that was pretty much the same recommendation that all of these vendors had too. So.
Yeah.
Right on.
Yeah.
Um, so based on the pricing you have here in front of you, um, just reminder that the Angberg Anderson Architects, uh, report identified the water heater as, um, a necessity to replace. It's well over its lifespan. Um, and as I mentioned this to staff, more than one staff said, oh, that's why we don't have hot water, which I didn't actually know that we don't have it. Um, so I think that this is a really great time. Um, what I've asked for all three of them to do was tell me the price of the hot water heater replacement only. Tell me what that additional price would be if we added the expansion tank. And then the first technician said, I'd really replace this valve that you have. And it's the, um, the cold water valve that, you know, brings the water into the water heater and the heater warms up that water. Um, and the way that he described it to me was that, and I know I shared this with Building and Grounds in email today. Um, this valve is a former design of the valve that they now use when they install these systems. Um, instead of, you know, just kind of a crank, almost like a clock design, um, it's a bar so that there are different stages or entering the water into the hot water heater. And the bar itself is not really much money. It's just the installation process. In order to replace the valve, you need to drain all the water completely to make sure all the air bubbles and everything is gone and then install the valve. And two of the three technicians said, I would recommend replacing this valve because we don't know how old it is. It seems to be functioning well enough, but if when we are installing the hot water heater, if this valve malfunctions, you run the risk of, well, I mean, he didn't use the word flooding, but essentially you would be unable to control the flow of water in and out of that system while you're trying to repair and replace the hot water heater. Um, and I thought that was well enough reason for me to propose it to you all, at least in numbers here. And so the first technician. And so the first technician said that, and I asked the for, the secondary the follow-up technicians to give me those numbers, too. Cahill Evanston didn't listen to directions. And so they only gave me one number. They didn't itemize. So unfortunately, that's all I have for you today. But even so, it doesn't matter because Lake Bluff came in at the lowest cost. I met with Mark Cahill is here in Lake Bluff. They have no relation business-wise to the Cahill and Evanston. In fact, I called the Evanston one first, thinking it was the Lake Bluff one, and that's how it happened. But then I contacted the Lake Bluff Cahill company and they confirmed we have no business relationship with the Cahill and Evanston. So they're completely separate companies. So that these are the three amounts that I have to present to you all today. They are under the five thousand dollar limit that the library director originally had. But since this is related to building and grounds and related to the report that we received from Angberg and Anderson, I wanted to highlight it to you all tonight, and especially the building and grounds, because we just met and they were wanting to see this work move forward. Any questions about the hot water heater?
So Renee, have you gone ahead and made the arrangement to have this replaced or were you waiting?
I just got the numbers this afternoon, so I figure I'd wait till tonight's meeting just to have the conversation and see if there was any new information that would inform otherwise. But based on the proposals I received, the lowest cost is also local. And I think that is a great option for us. So my recommendation would be for us to go with Cahill Lake Bluff.
Good question.
Yeah, Bonnie.
What timeframe that they provided? When, when can we get hot water back in the building?
Right? And so I didn't necessarily prioritize that information for this estimate. I just wanted the dollar amount. But let me pull up really quickly the Cahill Lake Bluff to see if they included that. I, I, some of them, some of them did include additional information.
Because it is just a standard residential hot water heater. I would think it would be pretty quick, but you never know. Supply chain's still not entirely smooth.
So, um, this is Cahill Lake Bluff, fifty percent down payment, balance due upon completion. Proposal valid for thirty days. Doesn't say. They didn't provide a timeline, but I will certainly, if we choose to move forward with this, I will, that will be the next question.
How, how big is it today?
Forty gallon. It's a standard forty gallon wa- hot water heater.
Okay.
And then they will adhere the expansion tank to the wall right near the hot water heater.
So do you need a motion or this is just kind of an FYI for the board?
This is an FYI for the board.
Yeah.
Any other questions with this?
Renee, just, I'm pretty sure we've done business with Renee, with Renee, with Ravinia in the past with these toilets that we were dealing with. And so that's not to influence your decision. I'm sure Cahill will be fine. And I agree with Lake Bluff, but if for some reason they're not available or whatever. Talking to Ravinia, I'm pretty certain we've done business with them. And you could always ask them to, to match the Cahill price if you were waiting for parts or whatever like that. So I mean, that's an approach you could take.
I could do that definitely. And, you know, I mentioned this at building and grounds when I was at Glencoe. Ravinia Plumbing was that library's plumbing. We talked about it. Me with the technician today about that. And they said, oh, yeah, I visited Glencoe. So similar old buildings, similar, you know, mechanical troubles. So I'll start with contacting Cahill Lake Bluff and then go from there. If I need to follow up with any questions to Ravinia, I'll certainly contact all three of them and let, let them know what the final pricing is of who we're going with. So then that at least puts the ball in their court if they want to adjust anything. So.
Renee, just real quick, do you, you guys don't have hot water at the moment or you, it's basically, it's close that you wouldn't have hot water. I, just to clarify.
No, I'm gonna defer to Martha, Jill, or Eliza on this. But as it was told to me, there's no hot water.
I would say we have tepid to warm water.
Okay. So, so maybe the other thing, when you're talking to these, these people, whoever can get it done quicker would also, that, that would also play in there. If you, you're playing around with a few hundred dollars to get hot water into the place, if somebody can do it, you know, in the next couple of days versus in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, and having just gone through this a week ago at our house, we learned that there's a, there's a great deal of sediment at the bottom of old hot water heaters that very much slows the flow of hot water throughout the hub of building. So it might be that we are, that the, the tank has hot water, which you have to stand there for five or six minutes to get any. So, which I, I presume staff probably chooses not to do. So you can obviously find out if there's why there's no hot water, but I'm guessing they're gonna tell you that the thing has filled with sediment.
Kathy, your comment just triggered a quick question. Are, is Cahill going to remove the current hot water heater? You're, you're muted.
And now you're on mute.
Your questions are excellent. I really was just focused on getting you numbers tonight. And so I will make sure to follow up with all of that. I can't say for certain, but I hope. So what I'll do is I'll follow up with Cahill next on all those other secondary questions that I need to have answered. And then I'll present similar what I did, similarly to what I did with the HVAC. You know, I received a proposal. I'm sharing it with all of you. You get an overview of what that provides. So I just said, I need numbers as soon as possible at this point. So I can certainly ask if that is included. I will ask.
Yeah, yeah, I typically, we, we had ours done a few years and they took it away as well.
Yeah, there's some very valuable pieces of metal on those. That people.
Scrap value there. And Cahill is close to one of those places, so they, I'm sure they'll take it. If they get it.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to see it sitting outside the building, you know.
Next to the broken book.
Exactly.
Can we convert it to a book drop?
Yeah, yeah.
And what a star library we would.
It's had four casters to it. I think it'd be very, very useful.
Couple broken down cars in the parking lot.
Staff, for those of you that are on the call, you matter. You will get excellent stuff. We will be replacing things in a timely way. Oh, gosh. Thank you all for the laugh. Um, all right.
Well, seriously, thank you, Renee, for jumping on all these unusual weird building-related things to, you know, kind of right the course, right the ship for, for the staff and the community. You've done a great job on some really unusual things happening. Looking forward to.
You know, I was talking to Kathy O'Hara the other day and I said, you know, Kathy, at one point I am gonna call you with a non-building-related topic for us to just talk about. You know, because I'm constantly sharing all these building updates. And anyway, thank you for that. I appreciate the support. It's, it's almost like a little bit of a hazing situation that I'm having of the building. Whether the building is sentient or not, I don't know, but.
Hope you bought a new house, not an old house. I hope you bought a new house.
I'll move on after this last comment, because I know we want to finish up at some point, but the day, the night I was here till ten thirty with the HVAC, I got home and you might remember it was really cold that day. It was like negative fifteen, twenty. I got home to a house with an HVAC that was not working. So I know some of you already know that story, but yeah, I called for an emergency call and it was like, I don't know, something in the air. I'm just getting all the building experience. I'm learning a lot, everybody. I'm learning a lot. Thank you. So I'm just gonna pose this question. We have another new business item, which is assigning the dates to the Friends meetings, which I think we could do relatively quickly. The Friends thankfully have already scheduled their meetings for two thousand twenty-three and we have those dates. So I remember that was discussed at a previous meeting, you know, assigning which trustee would go and represent the library. So that's still on the agenda for new business. And then the old business that we had to table to this meeting that we also tabled at the Building and Grounds meeting was a full board discussion of the building survey report from Angberg Anderson and Architects. And I know we've already exhausted a discussion of building and grounds items, but that report is incredibly valuable to us in our capital planning. And so those are the next two items on the agenda. So before we move forward, it is nine oh four. I'd love any feedback as to how to move forward tonight with your preferences.
Well, if you could send the trustees the, the, the dates for the.
It's in the board packet and I can share that with you.
And if you all could just respond to Renee within, let's say, the first, the next week on kind of queuing up for the Friends meetings. There's fewer this year than there have been in the past. Sort of reflect on the last time you were at a meeting and if you're due to, and perhaps you can just have scheduled. Renee, if that doesn't work out, you'll let us know by the next meeting, but hopefully we can just, like, sign up.
And the next meeting is in April, so we could certainly talk about it this again. And if we don't have all the dates filled, we could do that in March if we wanted to. And thank you to Janie, who represented the Friends. I was gonna share that in our director's report, in my director's report, but for sharing a great update at the Friends meeting. So I think that's a great solution forward. So we will not table the discussion. We will follow up with board members opting in if they're available, reviewing the dates listed in the board packet. It's in the director's report, the list of dates there. If you're interested in representing the board at an upcoming Friends meeting. Matt, did you have something? Oh, okay. Sorry, you unmuted.
Could I just under, under the old business, we're moving on to number nine now. We all have a copy of their survey report. And I know I have marked mine up with a couple of questions, perhaps. That could be our homework assignment, as it were, to look at this all with a little bit closer eye and prepare our questions and then move this up in the agenda at the March meeting. Rather than, because I hate to give this short shrift. Like you said, this is very important. But it is late. I'm sure I'm not the only one who's tired. And I, I'm thinking that, that we won't do it justice if we try and tackle.
I, I, I agree with you, Janie. I think we'll, we'll, we'll probably go through a little too quickly and, and it probably does need a little bit more thought bro. That's probably a good idea to go through it and, and make it one of the top agenda items for, for March.
Other feedback? I, I certainly support whatever you all propose. I see head nods. Okay. And then if, in the meantime, I might propose to, if you have questions about the report, that doesn't have to wait until March. You can send those to me directly. If I don't know the answer, I will get the answer. For example, the sprinkler system. I was just in the museum today looking with Murphy and Miller about the other HVAC issue of building grounds. And I have more information. Update you on that. So there's a sprinkling system. There are, there are devices in the ceiling that look like a sprinkler system. If you look at the report, it says the library side has the wet sprinkler system. It's the museum side that doesn't with the wood ceiling and the wood everywhere. So I don't know what that sprinkler system is in the ceiling. Janie, next time you stop by, just take a look up. I mean, there is something there. So I need, I already emailed John. I haven't heard back from him. So these are the types of questions. I mean, if you need clarification on anything, send them to me as you come up with them. And then bef- I can get the answers to you before the next board meeting and I can present the answers to the full board in March.
Yeah, I did see them. I was, I was up there with you when we were up in the, on the second.
Oh, that's the library side. So if you go back into the report, I think there was some, if you go back into the report and I did that today, just to make sure I knew what I was saying. The library side has sprinkler systems. It's the museum side that's covered in wood on the ceiling. It's the museum side that doesn't have an active wet sprinkler system.
Okay.
But we do. I mean, it's all we, it's our building. It's the building.
Exactly.
But that, that clarifies that piece.
Okay.
But if you go in the museum, there are still things on the ceiling. I don't know what they are. If, if Angberg Anderson is saying they're not wet sprinkler systems, then I don't know what they are. So send me your questions. Sounds like the board would would move forward with that as an option. And then I'll move this up to the top of the agenda for next month. Along with a proposed budget also. That could be the majority of our meeting.
Sure. Renee, is this the last of old business?
This is the last of all business, unless you have something that I don't.
I apologize, but I'd like to bring something up. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible.
Okay, sure. Go for it.
I'm asking John and Bill to pay attention to this. I have, I, I've been going over a lot of foundation paperwork, trying to sort things out as Renee knows. On October twentieth, we received a notice from British Law in Libertyville regarding the Stro trust, which at that point designated that the foundation was a beneficiary of one percent of the remaining trust, which was supposed to, they anticipated a final accounting would be by the end of the year. That hasn't happened or I've not been notified. We, what I'd like to do, and John, you had asked if anyone had contacted the trustee at, at back in October. No, and I wasn't really comfortable doing that. At this point, I, I am comfortable if, if the board thinks it's a good thing to do. Our expenses for the Stro room were considerably more than the Stro donation of sixty thousand dollars. And most of the finishes and furnishings were based on meetings that Cal attended prior to her trip where unfortunately she passed away with her definite approval of going forward with the furnishings that she was selecting. She sat through all of the workshop meetings. So by my numbers, it's about, the foundation made a payment of about twenty-three thousand dollars towards the Stro room. I know the library made a, a final payment and bill. I don't remember that cost. I'm thinking six, seven, or I could be wrong. And of course.
I can, I can also check for you and send it to you, Kathy, but I know that it was about, it came out of the furniture.
Yes. So anyway, I'm, I, I don't know what's appropriate, John, in terms of reaching out.
Yeah, what's, what's the total cost of it? All in?
Of the overcharges?
Well, just the total cost of the, the whole.
About a hundred thousand dollars.
And so we're short, I mean, we're.
Well, actually, that's, no, that's because that, the Friends paid fifteen, so eighty-five. So we're talking about twenty-five thousand.
Thousand dollars. And Cal died when?
In June, I believe, of two thousand, of twenty-two.
Yeah.
Actually, on June fourth.
Yeah, here's what could be going on. If, if they're gonna file a federal estate tax return, those aren't due till nine months after the date of death. So the federal state tax return would be due may, in March.
Okay.
So they may be waiting for, and I'm assuming this may be part of the their, their duties here. They get filed the, the final return. They may wait until they get a, so they file a return in March, then they have to get a closing letter from the IRS saying everything's copacetic. So they, so that may determine when they make the final distribution. But there's no, there's no harm in reaching out to them and, and asking them, you know, what's the status of the trust, you know? I'm, I'm searching for the right word, but what, where, where are we with the trust? And when do they expect they, they're gonna be, be able to make final distribution? And they may say they're gonna wait for, for the final tax letter from the IRS when the, for the federal return.
Yeah.
And we don't know how much the trust is worth, right?
No, we don't.
You could ask them that, too.
Okay.
I mean, they may, they may not tell you, but you, you, I would, I would, you know, may, maybe couch it in terms of, you know, we, we don't need an exact number, but.
Or I'm curious what one percent is, so, yeah.
Yeah, ballpark of what, 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 one percent of what's. Yeah, ballpark of what, 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 one percent of what's.
Is it appropriate or inappropriate to explain that we incurred additional expenses specifically at her direction? She expected to come back and and compensate or take care of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the trustee may not have any discretion in the matter, but it certainly um is the reason for the call.
Okay. Right, I just wanted to advise the board that, thank you, John.
Yeah.
Um, Bill, do you have any comments on this or?
No, I do. You know, I think, as John said, I mean, if we if we know where the numbers are, we can kind of. But you know, put the whole, everything together.
Yeah.
If it's something that is gonna come later, I mean, you know, we won't close till the end of April and. Um, if it comes after that, um, I mean, we. You know, we're talking about then getting into to May. Hopefully, all the decisions will be made by then. And um. Uh, if it's gonna be later, then maybe it's a case, you know, we. We we use part of the reserve and then put it back again when we get the monies. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's it up, if they're, if they're confident that there, there is not gonna be um. Excess liability, they may also be willing to make a partial distribution, like say half a percent.
Oh. Okay.
And give the final and and leave the other half for the final distribution. So that's also a possibility.
Would you repeat what you said, that you're confident of what liability?
If they're not gonna have undue tax liability.
Okay, oh, gotcha.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't imagine the federal estate taxes exemptions are pretty high right now.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, thanks. I I wasn't comfortable in October. Coming up with this conversation, but it's been long enough that I figured a phone call and I'd rather do it now than.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
So, can I ask about, no, you're okay. Um. Yeah, I do, since you brought it up, though, I do have a question. Does that mean that there's a possibility that the library's budget would be reimbursed for that? Furniture that they purchased earlier for the Stro Room? Is that part of this twenty-five thousand that you're discussing? Because.
I wouldn't bank on any of that.
Um, the rea- the reason I ask is because I don't know, I wasn't here. Did the library budget for Stro Room furniture at the budgeting process last year?
No.
Or or was this an unexpected?
This is an unexpected expense based on the workshops that we've put into the room and Cal's specific wishes to. Uh, for example, have certain finishes, the casework, um, the furnishings, she was clear about. The quality, she was, she was outspoken to Eric and I about the quality that she wanted and she wanted it to be similar to what she had in the room. So, yeah. Um, so no, this was by no means, and it wasn't intended ever to be a library expense. Um, and Cal just happened to go to Greece with her son and grandson and unfortunately didn't come back. Um, so I feel comfortable now having this conversation with them. I was pretty uncomfortable in October. Um, but okay, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out this week and, you know, see what comes of it. So John, I'll follow you if I need to.
Okay.
So just from a budgeting standpoint. Cause I know the finance committee is gonna get together and we're gonna talk about all these budget um. Items that have come up with building and maintenance, so we should not expect reimbursement for the furniture cost for the Stro Room. Am I understanding that right?
I wouldn't, by the way, no.
Okay, alright.
There's a, there's a. Uh, there's a donation that's going, there's a, I don't know what the word is, John, I apologize, so. The, the. The ma- the dollars coming are going to the foundation, but.
Correct, and I was thinking it would come.
I don't think it's going to, um, foundation made a donation of twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and then the library, somebody that got seven in my head, but that's, you know, thirty. What we do with it, we just gotta figure that out. It's all gonna go. Back to library one way or another, but we have to kind of figure out. You know, when we, if we had a real full board of the foundation, we'd have somebody to talk to other than me, so we'll figure out.
And I'm just thinking about short-term budgeting needs, so, thank you.
I don't think there'll be any disputes out there. We'll just figure out the best plan, so.
Alright, thanks, Kathy.
Sure.
Um. With that. We have um two more items that I see before adjournment. And actually, the next item is the director's report. And before I share the director's report, I do wanna ask. Um, because I'm com- I'm more experienced with the director's report being. Earlier in the agenda, ahead of new business or old business. And I was just wanting to ask the board. Um, do you find that the current location of the director's report in the agenda? Order is sufficient and meets your needs for the, for the board?
Well, the only thing I would um. Say about that is that it often does get cut short because it always is at the end. And that's kind of a shame because. That's usually when we hear all the wonderful things that have happened all in the, in the past month.
And that's been my observation just with these two meetings, and I don't have any prior experience here at Lake Bluff. So that's why I wanted to ask. Um, if the current agenda order meets your needs um with regards to the location of the director's report on the agenda. Um, open to any, any thoughts on this, keeping or changing, just wanted to pose the question.
Well, would, would it be appropriate to, to move it after the approval of minutes?
It would be appropriate based on um the direction of the board. So um, this is just my first kind of. You know. Thought of possible change to the order of things and I wanted to um. Just ask today, just to start gathering feedback about where the director's report is located in the meeting agenda.
So I'll, I'll make an observation. Um. I don't think we've ever made a, had to vote on anything. That came out of the director's report. So I kind of feel like. It's, it's probably appropriate placed, appropriately placed because there's other things, whether it's. You know, the finance committee has, you know, met and they are putting this forward to the full board for review. You know, we have to vote on the financials, we have to vote on the checks. So. I kind of feel like it it is in the right place. Um, I do enjoy reading it. I do look at the statistics. I know. You know, Matt's looked through the statistics uh uh before too, and you know, we've had. I think Anna's walked us through the statistics sometimes when we've had more time. Um, so. My feeling is, I think it's in the right place.
Yeah, I think I I I don't.
Thanks for that.
I, I can't say for sure, but I think that our bylaws might call for um. Adherence to Robert's rules, and I think.
They do, they do.
Robert's rules, I I'm kind of guessing they set up a um model of.
Do.
Past minutes. We don't have financial, financial, the new business, old business, and then go on from there. Um, so. With that in mind, I don't know if requires any altering, altering of the. Bylaws, I might, I haven't read Robert's rules in twelve years when I joined the board, so I don't, I really can't speak for that, but that's the only thing that comes to mind is that we. Would want to. And the public might expect us to follow that model.
We do have to adhere to Robert's rules according to our bylaws, absolutely. And so um, that was going to be my next step. I wanted to ask everybody if the current. Order meets your needs and then um get some feedback and if um after my research of Robert's rules, if there is flexibility, I could propose a new location. If that's interest of the board.
Certainly wouldn't hurt to look, see what.
I can do that.
See what it says.
Yeah. That sounds good. Thanks for being open to that, even that initial conversation. Um, I'm going to go ahead and just share my screen. Again, and um so just to confirm if we're following along in the board packet. Um, we're going to have trustees review the Angberg Anderson report on their own. Um, and then send any questions to me. Um, and then we will prioritize that topic for the next um board meeting in March. And so um, I had my very first Friends of the Library meeting in January. Um, and just to highlight the dates for that meeting, um, they're included in this part of your board packet. Um, up until that point, by January twenty-first, the Friends of the Library had raised approximately fourteen thousand dollars from their annual fundraiser. I asked what the average um, uh fundraising amount was. Annually on average, and I was given, um, I believe Jill, it was like twenty to twenty-five thousand. Um, as a range of something that they collect um every year. And they uh received a proposal from the library, which I attached to this board packet also. Um, of four items. I was told that the library typically only asks for one item. Um, but in my experience, it's sometimes helpful to give them a variety of options. Um, so that um the Friends of the Library could see their money spent in various places. And I'm very hap- happy to report that all four items were approved. And the library um proposed um a program, a a more expensive youth program that will be happening this. April. Um, we also approved the purchase of a new laptop, as you know. Or I think tech is for me to talk about, the finance committee too. We only have two laptops in the library. And um now we have three. So um for staff, excuse me. And so one of these is going to be, it's pretty common for outreach and engagement in the community to have some sort of tech device. That can access the internet, to sign up people for library cards, to demonstrate ebooks and how to download them. To show the website. Um, so I'm very excited with what Jill proposed. Um, this is a laptop, but also acts as a. Touchscreen um and can, it can act as a um, a tool to provide demonstration out in the community. Really great idea, and the friends were very happy to support that. Um, we've already had usage of our brand new speaker. This is now water resistant for outdoor events. The friends purchased the first speaker that is uh hit at our um local trivia night programs. And we also use that indoors um or at outdoor programming like Storytime um during the farmer's market. Um, so they were very happy to support this. And then um a new, a new-ish way of planning. Um, we ask for a, a set amount of money um from the friends. And staff will collaborate on programming across generations. Um, and consider the different programming needs that we have throughout the year. Um, so we asked them to support again um another annual disbursement of funds to support programming for all ages, which they did. Um, so very uh very productive friends group and I was very pleased to meet such an engaging and um. Supportive group of uh volunteers from the library. Um. We have four brick requests that will be installed during the summer of two thousand twenty-three. Um, one of those for uh bricks is going to be in honor of Eileen. And I don't remember her last name, but she's the former Friends of the Library president. Um, and this is a brick in honor of her and her work from the Friends of the Library. So it was a very nice gesture to thank Eileen, who actually was in the library today, um, uh for her leadership. Um. Yeah, in, in the friends group. Um. And from there, um, I think you've mentioned, or um, some of you may have heard me talking about new furniture. Um, they have an interest of spending down their balance. And so staff are currently working on prioritizing different furniture items that we can propose to them. Um, to purchase for the library. Number one being tables um in the library to replace the tables with the. Um, the wearing laminate on the top of them. Um, we have a prioritized list. Um, that will uh be sent to the friends after I get um some pricing from LFI. Um, which I hope to do soon. Um, Eileen Lack, thank you. Thank you so much, Jill. She sent me a direct message. Um, it's good that I know names. Names are important, so thank you. Um, I provided you an overview with some of the introductions that I've been making to the community, and it's at this point that I'd really like to thank all of you. For such a warm welcome um for the director's reception, and thank you all for all the work that you did to put that together. Um, it was a fantastic way to connect with the community, and I'm told by Kathy that even. Um, the speech that I gave that was posted on social media, thank you to Jill, um, is getting out there and people are connecting. With, with those words in various ways. And so um I'm starting to meet familiar faces and see them at the library again, so. Um, looking forward to just uh meeting people in the community. Um, Chief uh Smazinski from the Police Department has invited me to meet his staff at their March staff meeting. Um, I got that email just today. Um, so I look forward to attending that um to meet uh, to meet the community. Um, you have the numbers here in your board packet um about passports. I just wanna say thank you, continuous thank you for um all the staff effort that they've done. You know, it's not just the staff that are the passport agents, it's the ones that answer all the myriad of questions we get at the desk about passports. Um, we are answering questions about passports a lot, as you know, one of our main reference questions. Um, so really, all staff help with this service um in providing it the community. Um, so I just wanna thank them for their efforts. Um, we continue to receive an incredible amount of revenue. Um, and we surpassed seven hundred passports processed for this fiscal year. That is another record. Um, and uh, this was a lovely story. We had our first repeat passport customer. Um, someone that was here in two thousand eighteen and um, and uh. We believe that's a positive indicator of future sustainability for the service, that there's still a need and there will continue to be a need. Um. And then just some information about Storytime for Kids. I appreciate Eliza and her team's um intentionality in their planning. To, you know, evaluate what age groups are coming to the library now. It's very different post-COVID, and that's true in libraries across the country. You know, so who are we seeing in our buildings? Who are we not seeing and we're noticing? I'm sure Jenny can attest to this, just so many more kids registered for preschool now. Um, so leveraging that strong partnership with the preschool to bring Storytime in classroom. To the students and introduce library services to them. Um, while focusing on um that younger set that may not know about the library, especially if they're new to the library and having moved to Lake Bluff. Um, so I just wanna say uh thank you to the whole staff. Um, as they also have been incredibly helpful for me in my learning and um so much instruction in teaching and training in my first month. So um. I'm looking to take a lot off of their plates. Any questions about the director's report? Okay. The last item is any other business um or any other reminders or updates from anybody that you wanna share at this time?
Oh, Renee, did you want me to share about that email?
That would be great, yeah, if this makes sense.
Oh, great. Um, I just received an email today um from the Illinois Heartland Library Association, and they have exciting news. That they wanna set up an online resource for um trustees. So they're doing a survey just to get an idea of what trustees are looking for as far as training. Um, and so I sent that to Renee and I think she was gonna share it. Other people might have received the email too, but. I was really excited to see that they're gonna put together some online training for new trustees, and I thought that was really exciting, so. I thought we could support it by answering some of their survey questions.
I so appreciate that, Jenny, and um I'll also be sharing that you can sign up for Rails, which is the consortium that we're a part of. Um, and Heartland is another consortium um that informs continuing development and professional development for libraries. And all the levels of leadership. Um, and so Jenny is already registered to sign up to be a member of Rails. Um, and I'm actually the account manager and I can approve. Who signs up as trustees and trustees are able to sign up for a free membership on Rails. And there's free access to training and resources, anything. Um, so I'll include information about that along with the survey when I send that out. Thanks, Jenny, for suggesting that.
Oh, thanks. And Renee, I just have one question. Is there any kind of, um, I, I'm signed up for it, but I still don't really know how to access it or utilize it. Is there a link to like a training on how to use their website? Cause I was kind of confused.
Sure, I can definitely um see if there is a training on how to use Rails for trustees.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise, I could also do a very quick and fast demo for all the trustees in a future meeting, if that would be helpful. Um, just to kind of introduce you all to the resource. Um. If, I mean, whatever you think would appropriate. Um, I'll check first to see if there's any like self-directed trainings that they have for trustees there.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick selfish question on passports? Do, do both parents have to be present if they are completing a passport for a child?
I'm not a certified, thank you, Martha.
Sorry, that was reflexive.
Sorry, that was reflected.
No, that's what I wanted you to do.
Um, you, yes, but if one parent can't be present, there is a form that you can fill out that's basically um, and consent form that authorizes the appearing parent to um apply for a passport. Um, and the non-appearing parent just has to uh fill out the form and then get it notarized, which you can also do at the library. We've got notaries uh available too, so if, if you're not able to, if both parents aren't able to be there, you can just have the non-appearing parent fill out that form and they'll need to get it notarized and, and have the um, a photocopy of their ID as well.
So they should bring that, that with the appearing parent notarized and ready so they can process the passport? Sorry, this is selfish. I'm, I'm bringing a family of six from Kenilworth to, to our library for passports.
Oh, yeah, no, that's legitimate.
And encouraged if anybody would like to promote our services as trustees, that is well within your responsibilities and roles to let people know about our great services. Thank you, Matt. Without hearing any other business, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
Okay, so move, this is Bonnie.
I'll second this, Bill.
One second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, okay. Bye now.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.